Hello, I am your proud superintendent, Dr. Leslie Torres Rodriguez. I am leading the crucial process of reimagining and restructuring our school district. I need you, all of you, to be significant partners in our process. We are doing this imperative work to deliver on our commitment to ensure improved student outcomes and equitable access to resources for each and every one of our beautiful and capable students. When we have completed this process together, we will hold in our hands a stronger, more equitable school district designed to serve all students well, a plan built by the entire community that will benefit the entire community. We at Hartford Public Schools are coordinating the process, but you, the community, families, students, teachers, and all of our stakeholders are the voices and the minds that must inform this work. By sharing your thoughts, you will help to co-create our district model. Our work together, which takes place over the coming months in community meetings with families, partners, and schools, will culminate in the presentation of recommendations for district models for excellence, different ways in which the district can be reimagined while ensuring the health and viability of our neighborhoods and continuing to provide access to opportunities and services for our families and students. For news about meetings and ongoing updates on our process, please visit our district website at www.hartfordschools.org.
Good evening and welcome. Before we get started, I'd like to go over some ground rules, if you don't mind. This is a public hearing on the proposed closure of Simpson-Waverly School. All public comments will be related to this topic. Any public comments that, excuse me, relate to other issues or topics should be kept until the next regular board meeting. Each member of the public wishing to speak may address the board for a total of three minutes. At the two-minute mark, Ms. Santiago will ring a bell letting you know that you have one minute to wrap up. At the sound of the bell, the second bell, excuse me, your three minutes are up. We have a lot of speakers tonight. Please be respectful of others' time. If you run out of time, you may submit your comments in writing to Ms. Santiago. No boisterous conduct shall be permitted. Time limits will be strictly enforced. No personal attacks on individuals. No vulgar or indecent language. No signs allowed inside board meetings. The board meeting rooms, even though you have them, we'll try to accommodate you guys in the back, but...
Don't obstruct your view, just not to obstruct your view.
Right, just please don't obstruct anyone's view. Thank you. Speakers may not yield their time to others, other speakers. A speaker must refrain from naming employees. A person may address the board no more than twice in a single meeting. These are difficult times, I understand that, there's a lot of emotion. So, we welcome your testimony, and Mr. San, Mr. Flores is going to translate it in Spanish. Thank you.
Buenas noches y bienvenidos. Antes de comenzar queremos establecer las reglas para esta reunión. Esta es una audiencia pública de la propuesta para cerrar la escuela Simpson-Waverly. Todos los comentarios de hoy deben estar relacionados a este tema. Cualquier otro comentario debe esperar hasta la próxima reunión regular de la junta. Cada miembro del público que quiera hablar puede dirigirse a la junta por un total de tres minutos. Al final de dos minutos, la señorita Santiago sonará el timbre para dejarle saber que le queda un minuto para concluir. Cuando suene el timbre por segunda ocasión significa que se acabaron sus tres minutos. Tenemos muchas personas que quieren hablar esta noche, así que por favor seamos respetuosos del tiempo de los demás. Si no le das el tiempo, puede entregar sus comentarios por escrito a la señorita Santiago. No se permite conducta ruidosa. El tiempo límite será aplicado estrictamente. No se permiten ataques personales contra individuos. No se permite lenguaje vulgar o soez. No se permiten letreros dentro del salón de la reunión de la junta. Una persona no puede cederle su tiempo disponible a otra persona. No se deben mencionar empleados por nombre. Una persona no puede dirigirse a la junta en más de dos ocasiones durante una misma reunión. Este es un periodo difícil y queremos escuchar sus observaciones, pero por favor mantengamos el respeto. Gracias.
Thank you, thank you so much. Like I said before, I understand this is a very difficult time, it's high emotions, so please bear with us and be patient with others as they speak. Now, Mrs. Glanville is going to read the names of the speakers in order, and she will give you guys some time to respond if you're out of the room, because I see the standing room only in the hallway. And so, we're just going to begin. Thank you so much.
Thank you. First, Anika Benefield.
Hello. I only have three minutes, so let me get straight to the point. I don't see how any good is going to come from closing this school, shipping the children to Freddie Wish and Sand School, that those schools are already overpopulated, number one, so they can barely handle what's going on there. Keep in mind, Wish has two schools and middle school is there. I just don't see how that's going to be at all good for the children, or for the staff, or for anybody. I'm not understanding. I feel like something else can be done to fix whatever the situation is. Closing the school is going to be not only detrimental to the children, but to the staff here as well. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Andrea Johnson.
As president of the Hartford Federation of Teachers, I am attending this important meeting on behalf of the HFT members who are hearing of the possibility of their professional lives being changed. Our professionals have been treated with the same disrespect as bachelor school and extremely late announcement of the fate of their school. Two days before the holiday break, they learned of their fate. Quite a holiday gift. A very fine staff of this, the very fine staff of this school are the professionals that work so hard with their children and families. Just recently, there was a great Hartford Current editorial about the fine work that educators do at this school. This being stated by two professionals from outside of the school that have been working with the children at Simpson. Their editorial mentioned the importance of this school as a magnet for the community, as a magnet for the community, a comfort zone for the neighborhood families. A closing of this school will leave an enormous void. The fact that children and families rally around their neighborhood schools seems to be forgotten, but extremely, an extremely important fact. The fact that this building represents a safe haven for many students and families has a history. It has a history of three generations of family members attending it. This speaks to the good that this school has provided so very long for many children and many folks within this district. Once again, this is a neighborhood school. This is destined for closing. Again, this is very disturbing. Resources are not overwhelmingly available for many neighborhood schools. Money for classroom supplies has been dwindling significantly over the years. Requests for resources can often go unheard. Yet, our educators are here every day, working with their students and families to make a difference in the lives of children. In closing, perhaps the very worst thing that will come out of this closing of Simpson-Waverly School will be the loss of a place of familiarity, feeling of safety, feeling of community, but most of all, a feeling of, "I am cared for, for people that I know I am safe with." What a thing to take away from children. Thank you.
Tim Goodwin.
My name is Tim Goodwin. I'm a resident of 282 Vine Street. I volunteer here at Simpson-Waverly for the last three years. I've gotten to know Principal Watson very well. The teacher's here, incredibly dedicated, and please don't mind my daughter who goes to Annie Fisher. I'm here basically to speak about the fact that the enrollment problem that we have right now is because parents have left the district to go to other schools. And I'm concerned about that, because you have such a dedicated staff here. I would love to see more students in these schools. I see it as a resource and quality issue. I believe that if we had more resources and more quality, we would have an overcrowding problem, not an enrollment problem. There's enough students in the North Hartford area right now to fill all the neighborhood schools, but obviously that's not happening. As the founder of Community First School, I've been working with many of the people in this community, parents in this room, board members in this room, and we've developed a model right now that we believe will bring students back to the neighborhood schools. Parents have said to me during our listening tour, as I'm sure they've said to the superintendent many times recently, that they want to keep their kids in the neighborhood schools, but they feel that there are other options like Craig and Choice that are pulling the students out. We believe that the students in Clay Arsenal, Upper Albany, and Northeast can outperform their peers across the state. I know you believe that too. We have a model that's ready to go now. I know that you have a model that's in place for the future. Once you have to go through these difficult decisions, that will take three, five, maybe ten years, we have one that's ready now that was built by people in this community. So, we would like to be able to work with you to implement that, continue to work with schools like Simpson-Waverly, if it stays open, to implement that model. And we believe that it will prove that students will stay in the neighborhood, they will come back, and instead of enrollment problem, we can have an overcrowding problem. That's my vision for North Hartford. It's my vision that my daughter can go to a neighborhood school once she gets into kindergarten or first grade, and that the school can be the highest quality. So, as a representative of Community First School, and the board members and parents that are here that support it, we just say that we want to work not with Craig, or Choice, or anybody, or Hartford Public Schools, or even us. It's not about us, it's about the kids in the neighborhood, providing the highest quality option for them, so that they can have success down the road, enter a Brandon Weaver High School, highly, high-quality leaders, and then onto college. So, that's our vision. So, I just want to present that to you today. Please work with us as you go through the challenges of coming up with a new model and addressing quality, as the superintendent talked about last week at the community conversation, which was phenomenal. She wants to roll up her sleeves and address quality. Engage us, talk to us, and let's give this community what they haven't had since Shepherd versus O'Neill ago, the highest quality neighborhood school, well-resourced. Thank you.
Thank you. Aram Ayalan.
Good evening, board member. My name is Aram Ayalan. I'm involved in the CCSU-Simpson-Waverly partnership in the last three years, and more than a hundred teacher candidates from Central have worked with teachers, mentored children, conducted project with the whole school. Last year, I appeared before you with two of my students, and we gave you a paper that my students wrote about the negative impact that school closure might have, and here we are again. As an educational scholar myself, and as a former school board member in New Britain, I became aware of the negative impact consequence of school closure on inner-city community. Four years ago, in New Britain, I was a school board member, and the school decided to close one of its middle schools. Just yesterday, I already, I resigned after that decision. Just yesterday, the new superintendent saw me and told me, "Oh, we have an overcrowded middle schools now, and we have an inadequate environment for students, and she needs an additional middle school." Four years later, after the decision they made. So, here is the, some of, I looked at the literature, and I wanted to share with you some of what I found out of the unintended consequences of closing Simpson-Waverly. First of all, the socio-geographic inequality of access to education. So, poor minority students here will end up living further away from the school than their white counterparts, and they will have to commute further to reach the school. In the case of Simpson-Waverly, children as young as preschool, as you see here, will have to commute further away, and while their parents work long hours and have, and don't have, most of them don't own cars. So, this will be likely to reduce parent involvement in school, and will result in less access to after-school programs. Another negative impact that the literature tells us is the negative psychological impact. School closure causes children to experience depression, high anxiety, low motivation, low productivity, develop antagonistic and disruptive behavior, increase absenteeism, and increase substance abuse. In the case of Hartford, this means increased dropout, and of course, increased cost for the school. Another, another impact of school closure is that it really doesn't save money. The literature shows us that, first of all, many parents move out of the district. You know that school funding by the, by the, by the state is based on enrollment, so you'll see decline in enrollment in Hartford, less money, and the cycle will continue. It will increase costs of mental health, include special needs services, and, and more facilities to build, it will end up costing more than less, believe me, from my experience as a six-and-a-half-years board member. Finally, the worst of all is what you heard before, the negative impacts on the community. Schools are the heart of the community, and we've seen here in our three years of partnership that Simpson-Waverly is the heart of this community. Closing, closing schools like that is often signals that the, that the city doesn't care about, that the community is deteriorating. Schools are a meeting place, they contribute to social cohesion, to health, to a sense of place, to a sense of local history. So, a signal like that means the community is dying. So, in conclusion, I recommend to the school board to find other ways to save money, find more resources to invade Simpson-Waverly. We especially at Central, at CCSU, are willing to provide our share. You know that we contributed more than eighty computers last semester, and, you know, I think the faculty here, the parents suffered enough being on the chopping block for the last year and a half, and they deserve better. Thank you.
Tanya Owen.
Okay, well, my son has been going here for five years now. He is, he's been here since kindergarten, so this will be quite a shake-up for him. I myself had just started a business in Hartford, so now, you know, we have a pretty solid foundation here, and I see his teachers, they put a lot into his, you know, him individually, they put a lot into him. He thrives, the Connecticut tests he does very well on, you know, they're constantly communicating with you, they're constantly making sure that they're okay. The after-school programs, so these kids can actually, you know, get homework help, they can get physical activity into their day. The parents are able to work there till their five o'clock without having to worry about where their kids are going to be, you know? And my, my issue is, where is he going to go, and how big are their classrooms going to be? Is there going to be one teacher to forty students? Now, there's one teacher to twenty students. How is his quality of education going to be, you know? And honestly, some, some of these schools that are, like I've heard before, overcrowded already, and their quality is not as high as a standard as here. I've seen their standard is, is pretty high here. I like that. They push these kids. And if I see that he's got, if he's going to go to a school that's not as qualified as this one, I will pull him from Hartford School. I will, if I have to homeschool him, I will, because I don't want his quality of education, no. It's very, very important in our household, and I don't want his quality of education going down because we're trying to pinch pennies here and not trying to, to put in. I mean, there's other options, there's fundraisers. If there's something saying, "Hey, we're, we're struggling financially," maybe get the, the school together. The school is very good at getting together and doing what they have to do to thrive, to do better. So, I just think there's other options besides just closing a school where these kids have built relationships with the teachers, relationships with the principal, and they're very good with being on their level while being their, their role model, you know? And I don't want that to go away, you know? I don't want them to lose, "Hey, my teacher helped me with this," or "We did this today," you know, all the stories that he comes and tells me about. To lose that for a school that's, you know, like, not going to be able to handle it. Where are they going to go? This, this is a very, very populated city. You know, closing schools, I just don't see, especially this one, where, where it is very much the backbone of this area. There's not another school around, really. And the location is good, not a busy intersection, you're not running through Main Street, you're not, you know, I, I just, like I said, he's been here for five years, for kindergarten, you know? And I don't want to have to pull him. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Sabrina Smith. I'm the PTO president here at Simpson-Waverly School. It's going to be hard to sum up ten years in three minutes. I've been here ten years from what my twenty-one-year-old son. To me, this is a travesty, to close our community. It's taken our family away. If you look behind me, we have partners, we have family members, we have staff, they're part of my family. When I walk into this building, I feel honored. I come in here, and you feel the love. I've come, I sit, I talk, we've done so many activities here. My daughter has been here since pre-K, and to take her family away from her, something the only family she's known other than her biological family, I think is going to do a disservice to our community. This is our heart, not only for me and my daughter, but for our community. We have too many partners, too many happenings at this school. They chose this school for a reason. We're here, we're fighting, we're not going to let this end here tonight. I'm going to fight for my, my school. Thank you.
Louis Kelly.
My name is Louis Kelly, and I'm the president of the Hartford North End Little League, which has been around since 1989. Ever since that time that we started the league, it was done with the help of Simpson-Waverly It's very disturbing for us to think, after all that Simpson-Waverly has done for Hartford by being one of the schools that was recognized across the country, that you would even consider getting rid of a neighborhood school like this. It's disturbing to us because, like everyone before me has said, people have put forth a lot of effort to make this community school a proud, well-respected school. And so, what we're asking you to do is, we're asking you to take all of the stuff in consideration, go back and find a way to keep Simpson open. It shouldn't be that Simpson is on the chopping block. It should be that Simpson is the one that's out front showing everybody else what they should be doing. So, I just leave you with this. Getting rid of this school will open up a lot of can of worms. We have already a situation in which we know that school is the one thing that if we pay attention to and make sure our kids realize that education is the key, then this should be a no-brainer for you. You should be able to go back and find whatever it needs to take to keep this school open. Thank you.
Kevin Anglade.
So, I'm an ELE, I'm an ELE teacher here at Simpson-Waverly, and so, I'm going to tell you this. The recurring theme of this school, since I've been here in my very short time here, is theme, and the central idea, so the recurring theme here at this school, right, is tradition, sorry, and the central idea in itself is community. And what I mean by that is, I come all the way from New Haven just to be here, and from the moment I first got here back over the summer, everyone here has just been so, not just helpful and very encouraging to me, but they're really, really, really a strong, structured group here, from the families to the students. And one thing about me that I grew up on in regards to, you know, just growing up in general, my parents always raised me to be very close and very well-knit with my brothers and sisters. So, family is something that's truly, truly endearing to me. And just seeing sometimes the way the seventh graders interact with their third graders, third-grade siblings or second-grade siblings, first-grade siblings, is something to me that I really hold dear to my heart, and it's something I truly enjoy, because family to me is something that is very, very vital and very integral within this community. And more than that, besides our students, our lovely staff, and everyone in general here, their family as well. Every morning when I go print out copies in the copy room, I see the, I see the Simpson, Simpson-Waverly Star is aboard, and it has a bunch of pictures of all the staff members that have been here for over, for years, for years, dating back to 2007, 2008. And what makes me very humbled is to see that many of those same staff and faculty members that were here then are still here now, you know, and they do a whole bunch of things, whether it's working with PTO, working with our students that are on the basketball team. We just started a cheerleading team for our girls, so we're very, very excited about that. And I remember playing basketball, me and a few of the AmeriCorps members in December with the boys, because we were trying to train them to get ready for their first game, and we had a ton of fun, a ton, a ton of fun. This was probably a day after we had, you know, received word from you all for the announcement. And I remember all of us huddling, huddling up, and one of our students by the name of Kevin, he's captain of the team, and we were like, "On one, two, three, what are we saying, Kev?" And he was like, "Teamwork." And we all said teamwork, and I thought about it, I was like, "Man, such a thrilling, thrilling time to be here, but it's sad that I might not see any of these faces next year." So, shutting down this school, you wouldn't be just shutting down a community. You all would be shutting down a tradition, a tradition that has been going on for decades and eons. So, my parting words here is that when you shut this school down, if you shut this school down, remember that you're shutting us all down. Thank you.
I'm going back, sorry, I missed one of the names. Sharonda James.
Good afternoon, and thank everyone for coming. I wanted to start by saying that we had a, well, my I wanted to start by saying that we had a, well, my name is Sharonda James, and I am the secretary of Simpson Waverly's PTO. We had an SGC meeting, and the last thing on the paper for the agenda was the PTO initiative. So I personally took the initiative to write something up, and I just wanted to read it. The PTO, which is the parent-teacher organization of Simpson Waverly School, works very closely with our principal, staff, and students. We have a bond in our family. We spend a lot of time at our school, putting together events and fun things for the kids to enjoy, such as bake sales, arts and crafts, family dinners, movie nights, bingo nights, staff breakfast, harvest fest, talent show, end of school year field trip, and much more. The students here at Simpson Waverly trust us and know that we are here for them, and we enjoy interacting and spending time with them. Our family resource aide is very patient, welcoming, talented, and doesn't mind us utilizing her office to have meetings, to plan our events. She has also gone above her job title by contributing her time, patience, love, dedication, and always has a listening ear for us. And we all have a special bond. We have cried together, laughed together, given each other advice, and much more. We also want to take this time to shout out our principal and our staff for always having our back and supporting us with donations and contributing their time to help with our events. The closing of Simpson Waverly would be very devastating to us. It's our neighborhood community school. Some parents do not have transportation and are able to get their children to and from school by walking them. For some of us, should our children become ill or have an emergency, we currently are able to reach them quickly because the school is not that far away. This proposal also takes away our after-school YMCA Hip and Fit Program and our Bell Summer Program, which many of our parents utilize because they work late and cannot afford childcare. Our Summer Bell Program is very beneficial to our students because most of them will not see or experience the places we go on our weekly field trips. To us, all of us, Simpson Waverly is not just a building, it's home to us. And closing our school would be a devastation to our neighborhood, families, and staff, but most of all, our students. Thank you.
Jasmine Rodriguez?
Good evening. My name is Jasmine Rodriguez. I'm here to support my priority, my eight-year-old and my nine-year-old. They make sure before I walk out of the door, you're going to the meeting, right, Ma? Yes, I am. I'm here. Second of all, I'm here for testimony. I have seven kids, hoping that my 11-month-old baby comes to this school. Two graduated from here, four graduated from here, two in college. One of them received a certificate from one of the presidents of United States of America from this school. This is my family. Simpson Waverly is creating future. Two gifted, intelligent kids from here, two high honor students, and, sorry, on high school. This is one family, Simpson Waverly. Seven kids, six in school, four graduated, two, they're here, very smart, very worried about the school closing. I'm here for them, my priority. And after them, what is behind me, a whole family, community, we all together, we here, one for all and all for one. We stay together, we a group, we a team. They are the star, they are the future. Like I said, two in college, two in high school, high honor, very active in every sport. I'm the soccer mom, and I will be. I hope my 11-month-old baby comes to this school too. I'm here to support Simpson Waverly. They're creating a future. I'm a testimony, I'm telling you, my kids are doing real good, and some of them are adults already. I'm hoping that you please take in consideration of this. I have a little big family. I can tell that this school really matters to my family, always been, and I hope that will be in the future. Thank you.
Michael Downs?
Good evening, board members, superintendent. My name is Michael Downs. I live at 74 Rosemont Street in Hartford, and I'd like to say welcome, welcome to our neighborhood. This is a neighborhood we're very proud of. But what I'm asking here is what are you doing to our neighborhood? You closed Clark School because there was a serious health problem. It has not been corrected, and it's still closed. You made a plan a year and a half ago to split Wish School, preschool through fourth grade, would stay at Wish, and fifth grade through eighth grade would go to another school building. Well, now you have Wish, which is two blocks from here, and Simpson Waverly. And you could split Wish that way next year, the year after, whenever you want, but you have the building here. And you have a building over at Wish. And the plan, the original plan, was to use the Barber Building, which is also in this neighborhood. But you need a place to put pathways to technology because you can't continue to pay rent. We, the citizens of this section of the city, are not gonna allow that. We also, we want to know, we notice that you keep moving multiple handicapped classes around. There's a multiple handicapped class right here in this, in this building, and it's more difficult for them to move than it is for others, but it's difficult for anyone. My question here is, what's the rush to judgment? This neighborhood, this school, before the school building is closed or anything is planned for it, parents here want to know what is going to happen. Because there was a rush to judgment for the AI takeover, it didn't work. There was a rush to judgment of the state takeover. Not only did that not work, but it ruined the school system. And parents want to see, parents at this school, parents in this neighborhood, want to see a plan to give us back what every other municipality in this state has, and especially the municipalities around Hartford, the suburbs of Hartford, has, such as a middle school system. I know that one middle school plan is not a system. Vocational, technical education, art, music, library, special education, all this stuff was taken away, it was never completely given back. Social workers, guidance counselors, the physical education, and the sports program. Parents want to see this, they want to see a plan for this before any buildings are closed, especially this one. Thank you.
Terry Stringen?
Stringer.
Stringer, sorry.
Thank you for having me. I am Terry Stringer. I am a volunteer here at Simpson Waverly. I'm probably only, I should say, pastor that volunteers for a school as a gospel choir director. I've been doing it for seven years. This is my seventh year and I enjoy it. I want to talk a bit about landmarks. I started pastoring the church that my father had, that was founded in '57. I started at 27, I just turned 60 last June, so I've been doing it for 34 years. And I remember when I first came to that ministry, because churches tend to be traditional, there were things I thought I should move, but then wisdom said, don't move landmarks because they're very important, they have significance. So as I was Googling this school, I realized, I don't know if you did the research, but who Dr. Frank T. Simpson Waverly is. And ironic that he was the very first employee of the civil rights movement here in Connecticut, actually, in America, the first one. I said, wow, that's pretty deep. He was the first civil rights, so everybody knew he was probably minority, I think, for the most part. And here we are on the eve or the after celebration of Martin Luther King's Civil Rights Movement, so here we are considering moving a landmark. So that just kind of stuck with me because I thought about my own experience. And I said, that probably wouldn't be too wise. He saved what was a fledgling human rights division in Connecticut, in America, and transferred it into a civil rights movement. So the irony of his namesake failing and not being saved sticks with me as well, just as a preacher would look at it. So I was thinking that you're probably not just moving a school, but you're moving a landmark. There's some landmarks that should have been moved and are being moved in America, but I don't think this is one of them. So I would ask that you consider that because there's something about that concept, the history to look back upon. It is the only school that I noticed on the list of schools in Hartford in particular that has attached with the civil rights movement, the only one. Martin Luther King, of course, because it's been named, but that was the Weber High School that I attended when I was younger, it wasn't then called Martin Luther King, but that, outside of that, is the only school, Simpson Waverly. So I want you to think about that. Now, we wrote a song, thank you, we wrote a song that I can't sing tonight, but hopefully in our next meeting, the gospel choir is gonna sing it for you. Yes, it's a minute and a half, so I thought only had three minutes, two minutes, a minute and a half, so. Here are the words, it's, let's play pretend. The words are, let's play pretend, I'm your child, and Waverly, that's my school. What would you do if this were true? Would you help me? Would you save it? The school is in our neighborhood, that's where we live and where I play. What would you do if this was true? Would you help me? Would you save it? Can we play pretend? Would you help me? Would you save it? Can we play pretend? Thank you.
Mason Thompson?
Good evening. My name is Mason Thompson, and I'm a junior at Simsbury High School. I have been tutoring at Simpson Waverly since my freshman year, so the better part of the last three years. Throughout my time here, I've seen countless staff members put in hours of their lives that they could have spent anywhere else in order to help further these kids' futures. And through their dedication, these kids have grown and matured rapidly in more than one way. I can say with confidence, this school has impacted many of these kids for the better. Helping these students is a passion shared commonly by the staff. Shining down Simpson Waverly would inhibit their growth as both students and people, as they would be separated from those close to them and be placed in a new environment with an even higher student-to-teacher ratio, both of which are proven to negatively impact the youth. It's not just the students that benefit from tutoring, I've benefited as well, gaining an enhanced value of education and lots and lots of patience. The difference these kids have made for me is astounding. I've even started a charity with some of my friends to have raised money for the school in order to help them acquire new technology. These kids are bright, young individuals, they have prosperous futures ahead of them with the proper tutelage. These are some of the most dedicated staff I've ever seen, and they just care so much about their students. It truly is a community, like they've mentioned. I don't think I've ever seen a staff that's cared more about their students and wanted to see them succeed as much as they do. And they've really welcomed me into the community as well, because whenever I'm here and helping them, I feel as if I'm loved and cherished as well, and I feel as if I am part of their community. I look forward to every Tuesday I come here because I know that they value my time here, and I just want to do everything I can to help them. Shining down Simpson Waverly would be a requiem for failure, and I do not want, I do not, and no, you do not want to see any of these kids fail as well. Thank you for your time, have a wonderful evening.
Veronica Glick?
Hello, my name is Veronica Glick, and I'm from First Church Tutoring Group. I would like to say a couple words about how this closing will do more harm than good. First of all, I've seen firsthand the way that each kid learns in a one-on-one environment. They thrive, excel, and most importantly, succeed. Even on the small scale of after-school tutoring, we can see that the more attention each child receives, the better they do. I know from my own school experience, having been in different-sized classes, and from when I tutor at Simpson Waverly, that the more efficient learning happens when the ratio between students and teachers is as small as possible. Knowing this information, there will be less attention given to the students because of overcrowding in the schools. And closing the school is a sabotage to all of these kids' education, and we are willing to fight against it. Thank you.
Cameron Parham?
Good evening. My name is Cameron Param, and I am a junior at Simsbury Public High School. And today, I think I speak on behalf of the students and the teachers of Simpson Waverly Classical Magnet School and the youth group of First Church. When I say, when I ask that, you do not shut down this school. I'm originally from Stone Mountain, Georgia, having moved here in ninth grade, and can say that being able to help students that not only look like me, but come from similar circumstances to achieve a greater education through tutoring with the church, is truly a blessing, and it really pains me that they might face the same fate that I did as a child. Now, I can't say I know how all the children will feel about the possibility of having to move schools. However, I can speak for myself due to my firsthand experience of a similar situation. In total, I've had to switch schools four times in my life, two of those being in elementary school. And to be completely honest, it wasn't a pleasant experience. Having to start from square one again, especially at an early age, also, in my opinion, at this early age in the children's lives, where they're innocent and have a fairly clear consciousness, this is where they make the bonds and friendships that will last a lifetime, whether it be with teachers or other students. I say this because, for me as a child, I remember those people who took the time to care and nurture me, in addition to the classmates that I grew up with. Since elementary school, I've been able to keep in touch with three of my elementary school teachers. Of those I've mentioned, I've attended one's wedding and another's funeral. And at those events, the majority of the class that I was in had attended. These instances only emphasize my point on why closing the school is a mistake. And by shutting down this school, you are severing the bonds these children have formed with each other and dissolving the adhesive that connects the surrounding community. But may I ask, is the payout for the separation of these children really worth the cost? Thank you for your time.
Maddie Lafranc?
Hi, my name is Maddie Lafranc, and I've been tutoring and helping out at the after-school program at Simpson Waverly for almost two years now. Being able to help here is so important for me and for all the students and my peers, as you can see, how hard the teachers work, how hard the teachers and staff work to give the students the attention they need, but it's already difficult in the sometimes large after-school class sizes. Also, many of the students here already walk to school, and the location for the school is crucial for their education. Seeing how Simpson Waverly is truly a community through the programs that we do, like we hosted like a Christmas party for them and seeing them and all the families attending and all the gifts that they got to have, and was just like so impactful for all of us. Closing the school will only be detrimental to these children's education, and like asking ourselves, like, although there are many benefits for the district and budgets for closing the school, asking like what We just were, they were just floored by that decision. When we got into this building as a teacher and as us, the love that is here is beyond. I want you to imagine and close your eyes to the fact that at 3:30 when school is over, and all these young professionals and students from Buckley, Performing Arts Academy, kids from Manchester, Vernon, come down here to practice and perform with the kids here, that there's a beam of light that shines in this building, and it's not just us. There's basketball, there is the Y. The building is alive at 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock, 10 o'clock at night. That's what you have to understand, that this is not just a building, it is a community. And so, I don't want to go over time, but I want you to understand that in our community, we have to be purposeful and intentional. Our kids have to matter. Too often, we take their feelings and we overlook it. We are a minority, we're people of color, it doesn't matter what I tell you right now. As a community member and a member of my, my team, our motto is, "We stand for Hartford youth, we're asking you, where do you stand?"
Thank you. Lakeisha Dickerson?
Good evening, Board. My name is Lakeisha Dickerson. I actually have several concerns. One, to hear that the school will be closing very soon. I grew up on Barbour Street. I graduated here. This is the second generation for my family. My kids are attending here now, it's the third generation. It's very exciting to see my kids come to the school and get the same love I did growing up here. It was hard then on Barbour Street, this was a safe haven for me. Behind me is a family I have not seen in years, because I went to college, I moved on, I brought my family back, and it was exciting to see this. This made me smile when I walked through the doors and seen the principal welcoming with open arms and my children, to see my old classmates or my friends that I grew up with. I don't want that to be changed. I don't want my kids to suffer to have to go to another school that's overpopulated. It's not worth it, it's not worth it at all. I enjoy seeing my kids happy at night when they come from here. I enjoy seeing them talk about their teachers. I enjoy them talking about their teammates, their classmates. You can't take that away. Man, that'd be really, really hard to do. And I'm very, very, very disappointed in the fact that decision even came to face. But I hope you guys sit and really listen to this community, because this is not only a community, this is a family. And we care about the kids, that comes first. Have a good one.
Thank you.
And I guess that concludes all of the public speakers for today, and thus concludes the public hearing. So I just want to thank you all for your testimony, and we will deliberate over it, and we are set for our next public meeting, which is the 23rd, which is next week. So, thank you all for coming, we appreciate everything you had to say. We look forward to hearing from you and talking to you again on the 23rd. Thank you so much, have a good night.
Saludos. Estoy orgullosa de ser su superintendente, la doctora Leslie Torres Rodriguez. Estoy dirigiendo el proceso crucial de reimaginar y reestructurar nuestro distrito escolar. Necesito que ustedes, todos ustedes, tengan una participación significativa en nuestro proceso. Estamos haciendo esta labor crucial para cumplir nuestro compromiso, garantizar mejores resultados para los estudiantes y un acceso equitativo a los recursos para todos y cada uno de nuestros estudiantes hermosos y competentes. Cuando hayamos completado este proceso juntos, tendremos en nuestras manos un distrito escolar más fuerte y más equitativo, diseñado para servir bien a todos los estudiantes, y un plan construido por toda la comunidad para el beneficio de toda la comunidad. Nosotros en las escuelas públicas de Hartford estamos coordinando este proceso, pero ustedes, la comunidad, las familias, los estudiantes, los maestros, y todos nuestros socios son las voces y las mentes que orientan este trabajo. Al compartir sus opiniones, ustedes ayudarán a crear nuestro modelo del distrito. Nuestro trabajo en conjunto, que se llevará a cabo durante los próximos meses en reuniones comunitarias con familias, socios, y escuelas, culminará con la presentación de recomendaciones para modelos de excelencia del distrito. Estos modelos demostrarán diferentes maneras en que el distrito puede ser reimaginado, tomando en consideración la condición y viabilidad de nuestros vecindarios, y garantizando el acceso continuo de oportunidades y servicios a nuestras familias y estudiantes. Para obtener más noticias sobre este proceso, visite nuestra página del web del distrito en www.hartforschools.org.